We're at five fifty-eight, Madam Chair.
Yep. We will give it two minutes. What was the date of the last meeting? Oh my goodness.
January eleventh.
Thank you.
Does that mean today's the twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm, it does.
I will say, Madam Chair, even before the meeting starts, it looks like we have a good application.
It does. It's exciting.
Yeah.
I'm interested to hear more about it.
Yes. Five fifty-nine, Madam Chair.
I see that. You're gonna do the five, four, three, two, one? All right, it is six o'clock. I'm gonna call this Planning Commission meeting for January twenty-fifth nineteen twenty-two to order. Good evening, and on behalf of the city, we welcome you to this Planning Commission meeting. For the convenience of those participating in tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind all of you in attendance, both commissioners and the public, to please mute yourself when you are not speaking to prevent distraction and unwanted disruption. Staff will be enforcing this and monitoring those in attendance for questions during public hearings. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, staff will call on those who have requested to speak in the order that you signed up. Following that, anyone else who wishes to speak will be recognized. For those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair and to keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with the previous comment, simply indicate your agreement. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask those who wish to testify or believe they might please be sworn in. Do we have anyone on who's gonna speak tonight?
We'll have an applicant.
Okay. Is the applicant on or available? If you are, if you could turn your video on if possible and unmute.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Shamir Baktah.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. All right. Staff, will you call roll call, please?
Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here.
And I didn't miss Michelle, right? He's not here.
I'm here.
Oh, you are here. Okay.
Gang's all here. Okay, thank you. Our first item is a continued case twenty-one dash one hundred dash twelve, rezoning for one six eight one three east, twenty-third street. A request by Jessica Glavis for a quick trip. It will be continued to March eighth of twenty twenty-two. I need a motion for that, correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Whoa, that was a total tie. I don't even think a millisecond went. Brian, I'll let you pick.
Heather?
Got it. Okay, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here. I mean, yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-one dash one hundred dash twelve has been continued to March eighth, twenty twenty-two. Next item is case twenty-two dash one hundred dash zero one, rezoning of forty-five thirty-five South Herman Court. A request by Shamir oh my gosh, I almost say your last name wrong, to rezone this property from zero one, office residential, to zero two, to C two, general commercial. Staff, will you give a report, please?
Okay, as you can see from the vicinity map, this is right between Trace Park Court and Herman Court, those two dead-end roads that are just west of where the Rib crib used to be. They're across the Little Blue River. They're south of Valley View Parkway. You can see the current zoning pattern, so there is C two already adjacent to the east, and of course, everything along the corridor going all the way over to Little Blue Parkway on the other side of the river is already C two. And of course, the event center area, we have existing C two there as well. The rest of the apartments and office and credit union uses and dental office, they're in the vicinity to the north and the west, or of course, all O one office residential. The comprehensive plan looks at this as a mixed-use area, and of course, you know, we've got apartments over here, we've got restaurants, we've got office and hotels, and this is in keeping with that mixed use that's in that vicinity. Shamir Baktah requests a rezon an eighty-four thousand square foot tract at forty-five thirty-five South Herman Court, of course, from O one to O two, to build a long-term stay Marriott brand hotel. The flat vacant lot is wedged between those two, between the cul-de-sac of Herman Court and Trace Park Court dead in there, next to the Candlewood Suites there to the east. There are four additional hotels already located along the Valley View Parkway, and of course, they are all zoned C two as well. The applicant has submitted this preliminary sketch for the property showing envisioning a four-story hotel with one hundred and fourteen rooms. Of course, the final site plan will have to be more detailed and will require full elevations showing materials and design and meeting the non-residential design standards of the U D O. And of course, the site plan will have to provide staff with a detailed landscaping plan per code created by an architect or a landscape architect. And of course, the plantings required for that, street trees, along with shrubbery and other such plants. Given that the Little Blue Trace Park is located south of this property, on properties owned, zoned R thirty, the standard fifteen-foot landscape buffer is gonna be required, at least the area of the fifteen feet, if not necessarily the thick screening that you would normally have to add from another property, at least the landscaped area will need to be located there along the south property line adjacent to that park. The hotel parking lot encircles the building, so provides accessibility for customers and fire, obviously, as well. Depending upon the size of this building and the parking needs, that may spill over into an adjacent property to the north that the applicants are considering purchasing, acquiring, basically, the undeveloped southern portion beyond the parking lot of the dental office that lies right there along Valley View Parkway to the north. So this is the vicinity here of the development. We're looking northwest with the development to our back and standing in the the Herman Court cul-de-sac, looking toward the condo offices that lie to the northwest. This is looking up at the credit union on the left, and you can see the dental facility there on the right. Eastland Apartments on our right. Candlestick or hotel there to the left, and then the this property going back to the wooded area along the bike trail and the Little Blue Trace. A little bit farther to the east, you can see in front of the neighboring hotel, the end of Trace Court South, looking up toward the Baptist Church on the hillside on Little Blue Parkway. And then this is another view of the property from the Hotel, the Candlewood Suites Hotel parking lot, looking across it toward the Little Blue Trace. A little bit silhouetted. And then this is looking directly west across the property, the north side of it, anyway. This is a little bit farther south. And then this is the undeveloped property on the east side of Trace Park Court. There on the right. And then the Candlewood Suites Hotel here to the southeast. That concludes my presentation. Staff recommends approval of this zoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Preston.
Thank you. The fullness of your report, has that been shared with the applicant? That he's fully aware of all of the statements and requirements that have been put forward in your presentation?
He got a copy of this report, and of course, these are these are the requirements that we administratively will require with a final site plan and and with any building permit, but he's received a copy of this report.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
On the preliminary sort of site concept that's been put forward, mentions the four-story hotel, one hundred and fourteen rooms, one hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. I will confess, I have not looked or done the due diligence to determine how many parking spaces are required for that many rooms per zoning. Does the staff have a calculation of what that requirement is? And then there's a follow-up question.
He does meet that requirement. It's per room, so.
Okay, so then the next part of my question relates to the fact that achieving that parking requires purchase of land that is not currently under control of the applicant. Is that correct?
For this configuration of the building, it would, but if he can't if he can't do this, he might have to do a smaller structure.
Okay, so but go ahead, sir.
I said, you know, he'll have to, you know, balance, you know, meeting the fifteen-foot setback, which this conceptual plan doesn't meet for the parking and providing enough parking and enough green space, and then enough parking for the number of rooms he wants to to provide, and if you can't do all of that on the property that he has assembled, that he'd have to reduce the size of what he was gonna do.
Understood, but as far as the purpose of this application, there's no concerns with putting forth rezoning based on a concept that doesn't quite work yet?
Yeah, I'm sure we're gonna tweak this a lot.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody understood that, just for the record.
Thank you. I think that is important, that we're really looking at the rezoning. May we bring the applicant forward, please? State your full name and your address, please.
Yes, my full name is Shamir Baktah. Address is sixty-five sixteen West one hundred and sixth street in Overland Park, Kansas. I've owned and operated Kansas Hospitality Management for the last ten years. We started with much smaller hotels. We had our first development project a few years ago in Belton. It was a Fairfield by Marriott. We've owned and operated Marriott branded hotels for about five years. We started with the Fairfield at Worlds of Fun and in Fairview Heights, Illinois, and then we developed one in Belton. And we'd like to do something in Independence. You know, I think there is a need for extended stay hotels, especially nicer ones. And you know, I think that corridor could use a new hotel as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Preston?
Thank you. I want to thank the applicant for considering Independence and expanding, consider expanding his enterprise to our beloved city. Is there anything in the staff's presentation that you take exceptions to or would choose to modify or provide us another perspective?
A modified version of this site plan?
If necessary, but is there, at the present time, do you have any modified perspectives that you would like? Or are you
I do have.
Acceptance of the staff's presentation?
Well, I do have, you know, after getting some notes from the staff reports, or I have worked on the setback with the architect, you know, trying to make that space happen. And move, you know, that consistent moving the building a little further north. But yeah, we're willing to see what will fit this site. I have contacted the owner of that dental office building, and they are considering offers. It is a leased out space for them, so they do have to renegotiate something in their, in the lease with the current tenant as well, but I think they say it's looking promising on their end to purchase that little spot of dirt. But other than that, I don't have anything at the moment I can put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baktah, this is a curiosity question more than anything. Is Marriott for this particular part of their brand, is one hundred and fourteen their minimum rooms for a Marriott for extended? Their minimum requirement?
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah, no, I think they'd be happy with anything eighty rooms and above, based upon the brand. If it's if it's like a town place, they'd say eighty is fine. If it's an element, then they would want, you know, pushing that hundred-room mark.
Okay. Commissioners, any other commissioners have any other questions? Before we close the public hearing portion, well, not yet. Okay, is there anyone on this call who would like to speak for this project? Hearing none. Is there anyone on this call who would like to speak against this project? Hearing none. All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting, and commissioners, any thoughts? Discussion before we call for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Preston?
This seems to be a very thoughtful presentation in this application process, and as I said earlier, I'm delighted that the applicant has considered our beloved city independence in order to expand his enterprise. It appears that he is committed to his industry, and that is the course of his trajectory, is to operate very nice hotels. It appears that this is good for the city and good for this applicant. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the thing we all need to keep in the forefront of our mind, I think the real real question to us is, are we comfortable making this C two? If this particular project were to fall through, are we comfortable with this? We hope that this particular project goes through because it sounds you're correct. I think that we need more product in Independence, so we will certainly hope for the best, but I think that's the real question, is if we're comfortable with changing this to C two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This change is consistent with the surrounding areas, therefore, nothing in this rezoning would be inconsistent. Whether it is this project or some other project, it would appear reasonable that we would make this zoning change. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Michelle?
I would echo Commissioner Preston's comments there as well. I mean, this is a as per staff, this is a mixed-use area. There is C two around this area. Whether it is this project or a future project, we will still have an opportunity to scrutinize the the site plan and the the elevations of the proposed project to make sure it fits within the stipulations of the U D O and the neighborhood. So I don't have any issues with the rezoning on this, based on that.
Madam Chair, I'll go one step further. I will trust the deliberate efforts of the Planning Commission staff to administratively manage the process, not only of this application, but in the event this should fall through, what other would be the subsequent applications in this matter? So I think we have a very thoughtful Planning Commission staff and who would manage this process administratively. So I'm confident in that regard. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Agreed. I yield again.
Thank you for those comments. I think that they are important to recognize. All right, anybody else have any other comments other than, if not, I would take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Michelle?
The matter of case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash zero one, rezoning of forty-five thirty-five South Herman Court from O one to C two, I'm moved for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston? All right, we are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash zero one, rezoning for four five three five South Herman Court has passed. Thank you for your interest, Mr. Baktah, and we really appreciate you looking at Independence. That's good luck. Aw, cute baby.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Who doesn't love a surprise baby picture?
They're older than that now.
That's adorable. Okay, so I don't know if we mentioned it on live, but our minutes from the last meeting are not yet available, so they will be available at the next meeting. Those are the minutes for January eleventh, so we will approve those at the next meeting. The, this for roundtable, one of the things I wanted to ask or kind of talk about with you guys, with staff on, is are you comfortable with just the email packets for the Planning Commission, or do you want them to mail them to you? What is easier for you, what's your comfort? Yes.
I'm sorry for those concerned about the trees, but a hard copy is vital for our deliberation, at least it is for me. And it would be extremely difficult to be flashing with multiple screens in order to follow along and consider this matter. A hard copy, I would yield, I would vote in favor of.
I would also do that. I'm very much trying to be a paperless as I can. I will review the documentation electronically ahead of time, but as you will have seen me on camera numerous times, I'm still sitting here with a hard copy in my hand while watching and listening to the the virtual meetings, and I I would say that by the time we manage to get back in person, we will be relying on paper at the dais exclusively.
That's true. Okay, so Miranda, we still need the packets.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Just thought I'd ask. City staff, do you have anything for us for the roundtable?
I don't have anything for you guys tonight.
Well, thank you, everybody. It was a very short meeting, so I am adjourning this meeting.
And just note, there's no February meeting, so the next meeting will be March eighth. We'll have quite a bit of time here.
Wow. What am I gonna do without you guys? You're muted.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before you adjourn this meeting, would you permit me a short report?
Sure.
Thank you. My short report per the last meeting of the Independence Planning Commission is as follows. The commission met on January the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The commissions were The commissions were, as usual, both thoughtful and deliberate in managing the people's business. The planning commission staff and legal counsel gave proper and fitting support, and Madam Chair, we welcome you back.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you, I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think we're we are, we've said it before, but we I I think we have a a good and thoughtful team and a very talented team with each of us having different eyes and skill sets. I think it's really, it's really interesting to watch and really interesting to see how we each process things. So that's been a lot of fun. And thank you, Bill, for filling in for me, I'm sorry I didn't watch. All right, everybody, have a good evening, the meeting is adjourned at six twenty-nine P M.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.